We are presenting an A and R plan for approximately 2.939 acres possibly. Possible that are approximately 12 acres. Personal homestead, make the property more conformal to the rules. Get us around the solar system. Well, let's get out while. Transfer, process of transfer.
So you're requesting?
We did a way of.
Subconscious property.
The property we're doing our work on. But we are.
Were, was any of this land is part of the APR process?
It's APR property which paperwork has been filed with the town. Will be.
Well, I, I want to make a correction. You didn't execute the APR. It's chapter 61A.
Sorry, you said.
So, yeah, so the, the APR never went through. It is 61A property. The remainder of 490 Chase is being transferred from one farmer to another. This has been submitted to the select board for withdrawal from the 61A process or 61A program. They have not taken action on it. The A and R is an acceptable, excuse me, grant within the 61A. Mr. Pierce and I have had conversations about this and he is aware that should the selectmen exercise their first right, the town would own this funny little horseshoe around his residence and he would have to make amendments to the pertinent facilities to make sure that they would meet zoning.
I thought it, yeah, the APR was always done.
It passed town meeting, but I don't think the paperwork ever got executed.
I actually would.
Oh, it was, it wasn't prior to town meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just have a question.
Yes.
They look like they are going to be on both lots.
Well, they are right now. They will be on one. That's why I'm adding that piece around it to maintain that 35 feet behind it. So that'll make that piece of the ceiling showing that probably will then part of the 431 Chase road passing. So it'll end up on my house problem. That's one of the reasons for creating that lot.
Oh, I.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, Mr. Pierce.
Do you want to sign that now and send them on its way?
Yeah.
That's it. Well, you're still going to need to sign everything. That's fine. Then we'll just pump through this.
All right. Our next appointment is for 346 Electric Ave. Here representing. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll pass over it and come back at the end. Hopefully set the table. So the next appointment is 101 Pleasant Street.
Yeah, our, I think someone walked off with our easel.
We have copies of the plan, so unless somebody has a question about it, it should be.
Yeah, my name is. Decided to change it from the definition of the four lots down to the two lot A and R. You can see that all of the lots are just trying to hold themselves. So it's kind of so. And then one of the northwest, so the fire front. And then there's a common drive with the lot line down the center of the heat there. And then back lot line is going to be the same as that existing building line separating us from the commercial picture. And then that back portion will be merged with that's 76 lot four. And then you can see just break down here, the common drive, there's a couple ankle points there. That was done to create the required block with the buildings, building on that lot would be just to the southwest of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do have a question on the process. We had a little bit of questions down. We had the subdivision approval on agenda for some time. Is that when you drawn?
We have not received a request for withdrawal. My educated guess is that should the A and R be endorsed, there would be a request for withdrawal. And I assume that I would infer from the presentation that that is the intent. I'm getting, I'm getting the, the gentleman here nodding saying yes.
Okay, so the intent is to draw the subdivision plan because I don't want to move both of them.
So I mean, that is also on our hearing. So if the board wanted to address this and then move that up to hear that request, that would be at the board's pleasure. It would be a simple request from the applicant and a vote of the board to execute that withdrawal.
Do you have a request to execute a withdrawal of subdivision plan?
Yes.
There isn't a form. I mean, he can make a verbal request.
Yeah. Yes.
At what property?
At 101.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to accept the withdrawal of the subdivision.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it looks to me like. And it does for upland.
Yes. So the upland. It only needs to meet the, there has to be, it doesn't have to be only 10% of the lot size. They need to have 90% of the required lot size as uplet. They do within that lot.
Now, how about lot one? Reduced frontage, right?
Yes, so they would need 72,000. 169,000.
So that, the, the one and a half times.
Would be 72 because this is, this is an RA district.
Um, now, also, this seems to be a fairly sensitive area. There's two, two single bedroom rooms. Is that likely?
It is, uh, well, I guess it would depend on what they develop as far as footprint and whatnot. It potentially could trip the one acre.
Can I just look?
One acre. Yes.
Who is, who is required to confirm that?
The building commissioner would do that as part of the permit process if, if the applicant doesn't look at it and voluntarily recognize that they are making that amount of disturbance.
Now, the fact that one's mentioned a lot, is it duplex and six bedrooms? That's not big deal.
Uh, it's not. This is actually the, uh, Mr. Grazewitz has confirmed with building commissioner that this is a, an acceptable way to develop it. And I think that the, uh, the key is in the language. The bylaw defines both dwelling unit and dwelling. And the reduced frontage lot permits it to only be for one primary dwelling. And so a dwelling is just a building used for housing and a dwelling unit would be the individual unit within that. So the duplex would qualify as a dwelling because it is a single building. Well, you are welcome to.
One dwelling, what if it's?
Dwelling unit is the individual housekeeping unit. It says dwelling and dwelling is defined only as a building used for residence. Well, that's certainly something the board can look at, but the way that it is currently defined, the duplex would fit in within that definition. I'm sorry, it's not the, I apologize. It's not the reduced frontage. It's the common driveway. Common driveway allows it for one dwelling, not for one dwelling unit. I, that was my uh, mis, misrecollection.
Yeah.
Because actually the reduced frontage lot is only going to be a single family.
Yeah.
The guy would make the motion to approve the A and R.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next appointment is 111 Malthus Road. Here for Malthus Road.
I think that will probably also be Seth.
Cause he knows.
He was emailed the agenda.
We'll circle back to that as well. Uh, next appointment is 215 Sunset Lane.
My name is David Ross. Actually, years and definitely copper, hopefully sprouting on the southeast inside of Sunset. Their intention to create a parcel. That's better to be formed. Give that a lot of focus more larger size. A lot that is being cut out of one of the current American requirements. It is the topographic plan, it's a side of the requirements. And we're teaching A and R for the creation of parcels C with the requirement of.
No, it's not. It's not. It's not. It says 130. Or yet. Oh, 10.
It says one?
I was looking.
If she can have fun.
So is this the lot that we had issues with about the shared driveway?
It is. But those two lots currently exist. They're dividing off of the fat tail down at the bottom of the slope to add to the lot on the lake. It doesn't affect frontage, doesn't have any impact on the potential to develop the lot other than potentially a septic system, but where it is a vacant lot, they're creating their own peril if, if that is the situation.
Well, yeah, so that lot only has funded on inaccessible. It's.
It has to have, it has to be accessible.
Right, it has to be.
Well.
Meaningful access and we determine that lot with the intent of.
But no, this parcel C is a tail end, so it's like.
Parcel C, you know, they're not, they're not touching any access to either of those lots. So C is, is the only thing that's subject to. It's being attached to the fast bender lot on the shore of Lake Shirley. So they're actually increasing their lot size to become more conforming without taking away conformance from 2A1.
Okay. All right.
So. Zoning conformance.
Okay, but what 2A1? Not 2B, what 2A1 in existence?
Yes, it is. They came and they provided a driveway plan or the previous building commissioner, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But what was denied was.
Common driveway off of Rob's Hill Road. Yes, coming across the rear of 2, 2B.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call because it's going to depend. Paula needs to leave at a certain time and depending on when she can get in to sign them will depend on when. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment is for 733 Massachusetts Ave.
Three months ago. Came for the development of the three houses on that lot and was injected. So we stayed back and just wanted to buy the lot. But A and R. And then that lot, not going separately built. My attention, my attention, neighbor, they're interested in the death.
Okay, so that's what that part is not filled with.
Would you be selling it to the neighbor to the right?
Uh, right now, both of them are totally interested.
Okay. I think in, in origination, it would certainly benefit the neighbor to the right through additional frontage and that little finger would pair nicely with that lot. But.
We'd have to be concerned at all of sewer assessments.
We don't. We do not.
My understanding was the 24th apartment behind this lot was not.
It's not within the sewer district except for the initial 200 or so feet of that throat on Chestnut. Um, I think it probably lines up around the end of the limited business zone. Uh, but Mr. Mr. Doe's property is connected to sewer currently and he has paid his, his betterments and, and privilege fees and so he doesn't have any, any issue in that regard.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to circle back to Electric Ave and Malthus Road, but I don't see.
I don't see. Oh, oh, look, there he is. Snuck in on us.
No worries.
Like to do Electric Ave first?
Sure, yes.
You do get.
Order, so I'll introduce myself. And Seth Donal with Bill's Road. And I'm here for you on behalf of the A and R plan submitted for 346 Electric Ave. The site contains existing dwellings, associated outbuildings, and we propose to create lot 1A, which is a lot that will exceed my carrier requirements to comply law. And what's left behind is parcel A, which has been labeled not a building lot and that's combined with a buddy. Any questions related to it?
Right, you said parcel A is going to be labeled not a building.
Uh, I actually missed one. It's to be combined.
Okay, cause he doesn't say, okay.
So there's an existing building at number three. So no changes to those lot lines. So what you see at that point is what exists today. The only thing we're creating is the lot line associated with.
You just be building, is that a dwelling or what?
That's the garage. Ready for us from evening.
Oh, thank.
That's the swamp next to the car wash. Yeah.
Waterfront.
Of waterfront condos soon.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you have 111 Malthus Road.
Correct, so Seth Donal, Bill Ford again. While it goes forward, the plan was created lot one and lot two on Malthus Road. Lot two contained an existing barn and an associated well. At that time, there was stock that was all to be abandoned. The well would be put in. The applicant has had that well tested and it is usable. And so what we propose is the creation of parcel A, which was on the plan before you. The intent of that is to allow the well with the current setback requirements to the lot lines. So parcel A will combine with the system lot two to create the new lot two A, which also meets the punishment area requirements.
So the only modification is right along that lot line where we see the offset of 52 and 51 feet. You're just putting a little jog in there.
Exactly, so parcel A will go on a lot one. But this is lot two.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. Yeah, for 346 Electric District, is there any time to pick up the file?
Uh, we're hoping tomorrow.
Great.
So say after lunch.
That's agreeable. Thank you.
Eric.
All right, so that's it for A and R. Our next agenda item is an appointment, appointment for 234 Summer Street.
So I don't see the applicant and I'll just run you through this because it has a long history with the board. This is the house that the Miller family built on Summer Street, uh, adjacent to their paving business. And at the time, the butter at 236 Summer Street was having a neighborly dispute with the owners of 234, came to the board and demanded the fence be placed between the property as part of the site plan approval that resulted from the special permit for one nonconforming to another. The board and the applicant acquiesced. The fence was placed. It's a eight foot tall vinyl fence. The, in the recent past, the owners of 234 have acquired both 236 and 240 Summer Street. And their request for de minimis change is to remove the fence from the lot line between 234 and 236 and reinstall it along the frontage of the vacant area of 240 where they are currently storing product that goes with their excavation and paving business. I believe they're going to be required to get a special permit for outdoor storage at some point. Uh, I need to follow up with the building commissioner when he's back in the office about that. They have been doing it and he would need to go and get them to do that, which would be in line with what's currently being done in that area. It is an office park industrial district. And they are the butters for much of that stretch of road. That whole side of, the whole southern side of the street, this is some.
Are you sure?
Yeah. No, this is office park industrial, almost positive. They got a special permit to, um, take a commercial building, which was a nonconforming use and convey it to another nonconforming use, which would be the residence.
So.
It is Office Park Industrial from the Lemonster Line to 40 Summer Street. Uh, I'm assuming it has been incredibly recent since. Well, I will follow up.
So let's do John Bell.
It is there. Both of us, the Sean Belt, you choose. That's fine. And I will get that and.
Well, I guess the other question I would have is, I mean, it's up to the building commissioner, who's obviously in the woodwork industry, but in my mind, that's change of use as well.
Cool, yeah.
And so that would trigger segment approval. Or at least we were. Because we've got a lot of.
Yep.
Properties like that that have gone. Process. All right. So moving on to 475 Lemonster Shirley Road, which was continued from our last meeting.
We, uh, Peter Mahoney, uh, James C, T B G, Bluebird, LLC. With the night, uh, our owner, Heather Monch, uh, Freeman, producer, and traffic engineer. With Bill Manigan, Manigan, he's on.
Goes here.
A few other members of our team as well as the, the, the board's theory.
Yep, MDM is here.
So we were here, uh, 26, seven weeks ago.
So we were here, uh, twenty six, seven weeks ago, um, and then the, the, uh, we, we left the meeting was to focus on the last remaining major issue with traffic. Which was, uh, there's been multiple meetings between Freeman Peters and M D M over the last six weeks. Um, I think concluded in a pretty, pretty good fashion from the engineer's standpoint, our standpoint, uh, with, with kind of a, a few back and forth letters and a summary. I understand you guys are short on time tonight, I can refer to, refer to you to the board, uh, as how you want to proceed, if you want. Heather present, uh, where we are, it's one of the, uh, speak, whatever, whatever is supposed to be.
Yeah, no, I think if Heather starts off, then we can move on to M D M.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
So just, uh, quickly going through them with Ben, uh, we, at the last meeting, we were reading the peer review letter, we received that through the letter on October eighteenth. And then, um, I want to say that the process has been extremely, extremely collaborative. Thank you so much for letting us talk with M D M directly. It really helped, um, and, and we'll see why here, because we received the letter on the eighteenth. We were able to have a meeting with M D M on the twenty second to discuss some of the comments, just to make sure we were going to give them exactly what we needed. We then met with the town and M D M and ourselves on the twenty fifth. Uh, we were able to then submit a, a pretty complete, many pages, um, response to comment letter on the twenty ninth. And on, and that was a Friday, and on Monday, M D M met with us again to ensure that everything, that if there was anything else that they needed, if there was anything else that they disagreed with or anything. And from that meeting on the first, the next day on the second, on November second, we submitted a summary of our mitigation commitments and a monitoring study. They provided their comment letter on November fourth and, uh, they had some, uh, comments on mitigation. Well, not communication, really, the, the T D M and some other things to be added. So we updated based on the comments that they wanted to see and that was sent in on the day. So just to, when you go over and I, my plan's on your computer, I know that I can have it in front of you as well, but just to quickly go over, uh, the response to comment letter that was, I think it was a hundred pages. They wanted some counts of the adjacent rival, which we got, they wanted help actually, which we got. They wanted some information about our growth rate, which we provided. They wanted, um, updated signage plan, which we provided in that letter. They wanted an updated site line plan, um, to provide a better minute, but also a profile. They wanted, uh, which was all provided. Also, as a part of the response comment, looked at a couple more intense land use codes. So warehouse, there's a bunch of warehouses, so we looked at a couple more, uh, more intense reasons. Just to see what that would do to the intersection analysis. We looked at truck sensitivity, sending trucks more toward Shirley, just to see what that would do to, to the roadway and the rivals. Uh, we looked at communication at Mr. Shirley Road, at Fort Con Road, so we've got them to go over that a minute. Uh, another thing that they wanted to see was in our last presentation, we had a left turn lane at the site driveway, meaning to only try drive way. And D N thought it was very important to make sure that we included five foot bike lanes out there. So our design of the left turn lane now includes on the five foot bike lanes on both eastbound and westbound. What that did was shift into the site a little bit, which meant that our site lines got a little different. And when we did that site line, we do cross over a piece of the adjacent property, which means that we need a site line movement, and that has all been shown on our comments on, on site comments. Uh, last week, there were some T D M measures that were further defined and some traffic communication measures that were further defined, and that was all submitted, like I said, on the eighth of November. Uh, I don't know if we need to get into everything about it, but I do, I would like to go over some of the mitigation commitments, just so that you know what we're all for. Your T D M measure, which we proposed, if you want to, we'll add them, add them, we told in this last set of, but more importantly, the mitigation commitments. Uh, prior to, so what we're saying that we will do prior to occupancy of the building is, uh, we will put pavement markings at the intersection of Mr. Shirley Road or Con Road, three hundred feet in each direction. Well, but today, there's no pavement markings at all. We will make sure that those are straight in such a way that the right turn truck that is shown in our truck conference, our response comment letter. Uh, can make that turn without crossing over the double doors that are concerned, that will include, uh, double center lines, double edge lines, and stop on, on a facility to. Prior to occupancy, the applicant will provide intersection designer for a ten percent traffic, uh, plan and survey for the intersection of Mr. Shirley Road at Fort Con Road. That will be right away, any geometric improvements that we can do, and potential traffic signalizations that is possible there. Uh, so that is a. Around the concept plan, it's just with survey, right away, we'll actually be able to see what can be done at that intersection for future plans for the intersection. Uh, they also add, I think we put up preliminary cost estimate for the different design alternatives that we come up with at ten percent. So we get, you know, different things as part of that, ten percent requirement for the intersection, uh, when we put analysis, go out, things like that. Uh, and then lastly, uh, we would, uh, once the facility is open, three months after occupancy, we would prepare our traffic service study. So that's part of our initial commitments that we committed to. Uh, so in total, just again, before the property is occupied, we would have a left turn lane at the driveway. We would include bicycle lanes, we would have the, the town hall, the frontage portion that we put, we would have a tree right cutting and brush clearing at intersection of Mr. Shirley Road and Reservoir Road. And we discussed that a lot in the meeting. We would have the, um, additional traffic signage changes along Mr. Shirley Road, and we would, we would, we would, we would, we would, we would install a paving function that comes from Shirley Road, Fort Con Road. We would, uh, prepare the intersection design on ten percent plans for the intersection of Mr. Shirley Road and Fort Con Road. And we would conduct the monitor setting post occupancy, uh, within the. And then, then we laid out in this, uh, letter what we would do as part of the monitor A. And then we'd, um, count at the driveway to make sure that we don't exceed this number that we came up with, was a hundred and forty trips into and out of the site. Uh, so we moved seventy counts at the site, we would observe, uh, the catch, the actual count, the aim, the peak out, there that's a hundred and forty. Trips into and out of the site, we would be crash data, just to make sure that with the additional traffic there within the one, uh, three months of opening or since, since the opening of the project, there does seem to be any crash trends. And basically, at that point, if we do not exceed the, we would stop, we would, all the mitigation that I just laid out in all the bullets would be enough for the study. Uh, if in fact, the project that moves in or the facility that moves in does exceed the hundred and forty, uh, trips per hour during the A or the P M hour, we would then do more. We would collect twelve hour counts at the intersection of Mr. Shirley Road and Fort Con Road after occupancy to, uh, to see who needs signal warrants and we point out the patch and the analysis. Uh, we would compare the results of the capacity analysis to what was already provided in our previous traffic letters in response to comment letter. Um, we would conduct the signal warrant, and we would, again, look at the, the fractures that have occurred since the opening of the facility. Uh, and then what would happen is if, if we, if the impacts of the project could be mitigated, right, the facility that's in place could mitigate with a geometric improvement that is identified on the ten percent plan. Then we would do that. If it needs more than that, then we would, uh, our, what we would like to do is commit to bringing the ten percent plan of the intersection to full design. And by doing that, this, the town would have complete design plans that would allow them to get grant money to, uh, construct the actually. So we have fair share contribution to improve that. A lot of information, I did quickly, make up questions, but I'm letting D N's online too, so I didn't think we could add all your thoughts, um, to the side. Like I said, that's, that's what we are offering.
One, excuse me, one quick question. Is, is everything you just described in, in this format someone?
Yes, everything to be. Just for a little bit.
And actually, I think what you have is maybe the initial, um, the, the November fourth, was it? Second, yeah, and then.
It's the most recent one, and it was one date, November eighth, and full on it, so you could see what we added to it.
So if you find the draft decision, it's after the last completion of the draft decision, so.
And I believe you were forwarded the email that had the November eighth update, and I do have it. Excuse me, so the final decision will have the November eighth update. As the mitig, it, she, it is the November eighth, uh, one on your, your decision. Is it, it has the bold. Yes, and on the back, there's a, there's a, an appendix.
That's the appendix, so.
That lists everything that she just outlined here.
T D M measure of communication, uh, comments and. Section, and like I said, we updated it based on the comments, uh, but they have not officially approved or, so they remain.
So I guess I have a question. If I'm understanding correctly, maybe not. Phase two is if the facility exceeds a hundred and forty feet hours, then you'll do the collateral turn, you'll conduct the fast, you'll have to prepare the signal warrant analysis. But the cost of improvements to be instructed, worn by the town?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
So let, let's. I guess I should step back. The reason why we have to have a phase one and a phase two of monitoring programs is because we don't know who.
Right, you don't have to.
Right, so we're trying to cover all these, right? So as part of phase two, like we said, if you exceed it, we would possibly, I'm, I'm making this up, I have no idea, but. Let's say the ten percent design says that we can put two lanes on Fort Con Road, okay, approaching the intersection because they're operating. We don't impact wetlands, we don't have to decay things, whatever it may be. It, it, it is determined that the impact of the project can be mitigated through implementing that geometric improvement. The applicant would do that work.
Right.
If the intersection needs so much more, because other background developments came in, something else happened, whatever, um, we would then. Say that our fair share mitigation to the intersection improvements are bringing the ten percent design, which the applicant will have already paid for, to one hundred percent final plan. Which means that you have a shovel ready project, uh, which costs money and is.
Usually the, a, a, a big part of the town's share for tip projects or complete street projects or something like that.
Right, but this is a big assumption that we would promote feature. I mean, having a lot of the M P O for years, I mean, I know.
That was just an example, I mean, but complete streets is something that we're a part of, that you need to have a designed project for. There are Masworks grants that this would also be fundable through.
I get that, because all has a grant.
Correct. Correct.
I, I totally understand that, having been involved in this for years. My question. If you look at the phase two, I understand what you just said about if additional building comes in, and, and to me, that changed the whole picture. Because if additional building comes in, then obviously we're going to have to rebuild the intersection. But phase one is basically not going to exceed the hundred and forty trips. Phase two says if it does exceed the hundred and forty trips, we're going to do these things, and our share will be to do this plan. To me, if the facility exceeds the hundred and forty trips, then I, you know, if we were able to get that funding terrific. But if we're not, we now have a dangerous situation that exists, that while the plan is going to be done, the cost of making improvements will be borne by the town if we're not able to get that funding. I'm not okay with that, but that intersection needs to prove it today, like this project was, which is why our fair share.
That's, and I think that's really what it comes down to, because the, the cost of completely renovating the intersection from design to completion. Is beyond a reasonable commitment for a single development of this size.
The reasonable commitment to be would be that the site shall not exceed a hundred and forty feet hours, period. And then. I mean, then we're not exacerbating an already dangerous situation. But if this facility, whatever tenant goes in, does exacerbate an already dangerous situation to the point where we're exceeding this hundred and forty feet hours trips. But that to me is not a town issue. But that's exactly what we're doing in monitoring, so that is, we're going to find out if our project is, is that, is a, a bad issue. I, I understand that, right, and you're doing the, you're going to do the study. And then if necessary, you're going to do a full blown plan. If, if the mitigation measures that we proposed deal with it fine. But if they don't, an additional intersection improvement is needed, if you're willing to do the plan, and that would be your contribution to make.
Or we're willing to do a geometric improvement or, or something that was out of the ten percent plan to actually implement something and, and put dollars down on, on most likely. The other thing too is that, uh, just a thought, but the, uh.
I'm not, I'm not.
I, I'm having a hard time, oh, please go ahead.
Sorry. The reason for the second phase is, when we have this hundred and forty trips, what if we, what if we generate a hundred and forty five trips? Well, we have to do this, and just because we generate five more trips than a hundred and forty doesn't necessarily mean that we trip a signal up there, you know? Um, that, it's just, you had to put a number on it, if the, um, and M D M can speak to this, or if we came up with that hundred and forty trips, because it's about a five percent increase at the existing intersection today. Um. At, at Mr. Shirley Road and Fort Con Road, that's kind of where the hundred and forty trips came from. So that's what, we had to break it out somehow, and we, and we had to have this A and B, because what if we're just over the one forty, if they were fair, we would have to, you know, implement everything into that.
I think the challenge I have, and I, I certainly agree with Mrs. Bertram's comments relative to the concerns with traffic in that area. And that, there's a few key intersections there that see a lot of traffic volume, and they haven't been breached in years. The challenge for me is that I feel like the applicant's done a good job trying to mitigate the impacts of the traffic that's associated with their project. Meanwhile. If you think back over the years. All of the other industrial developments in that area have grown hand over fist. I mean, the amount of trucks that moved through that area of town has easily doubled in the last ten years, if you, just based on my observations. And I don't think that it's fair to necessarily hold this applicant accountable for doing massive intersection improvements when. A lot of the growth and safety concerns are uses that are. Not existing.
It, well, they're not relative to this specific product.
And, and I guess my perspective is, they've done a traffic study that exists in this issue. We're now talking about distribution facilities that is going to, I, I don't even know the increase that's going to be proposed to this area. So my concern is that if they, if they, I don't disagree that we have a difficult situation out. But we analyze existing conditions, and these, these are the recommendations for the look for. My concern is because we don't know who the town is, we don't have an idea what the trip generation is going to be. And if it stays under the hundred and forty five, but if this one facility triggers it over that, then I don't believe the cost should be borne by the town. If we're able to get, we have fantastic, but if we're not. If we're able to get it, fantastic, but if we're not, it's this facility. And, and any other industrial development that comes into this area is going to be faced with the same problem. But to me, not knowing the tenant and not knowing the amount of trips, while I appreciate that they're offering to do these mitigation matters, which in that sort of changes. And that they're proposing to do the plan, and I understand the plan, the plan cost is significant. But it is nowhere in comparison to the intersection changes. And when I was involved with the MPO for many years and saw the plan cost in comparison to the project cost.
And, and I, I don't disagree with you, my practical thoughts, I mean, to sort of build off what Tanner was saying. This is an existing issue that yes, this has the potential to exacerbate, and they're committing to the monitoring program, which is helpful. And you said that they don't, you know, the, your desire would be them not to exceed 140 trips peak hour. I think that's great, and I, I agree that that's a, a perspective that would be the best case scenario. In the instance that they go through the monitoring program, and that's the condition is they don't meet, they don't exceed the 140. And they come back in six months, and they're like, you know, we're at 138 trips peak hour, and we're like, all right, they show us the data, we move on. In two years, if there's a feeling that they're exceeding, the enforcement mechanism is for the town to then retain a traffic consultant. To go and do our own traffic, and then it becomes the town's responsibility to fund the enforcement of that condition without any funding to do so. And so I think with the, the offer that's on the table, there's a benefit there, and I don't know if maybe Dan can speak to this from MDM a little bit. But is there maybe a ceiling, you know, okay, under 140, everybody goes on with life as it is. Exceed 140 up to X, we work through the, the, the 10% design, either the geometric improvement or the completion of plans. And if traffic gets to this other point, there needs to be some additional, you know, if, if traffic were twice what it was intended to be.
I would not necessarily want it to continue to be the town to work for granted and to, and to get funding.
I, I.
I mean, that, I'm not willing to.
So that you know, we did, as part of the sensitivity analysis that we did, and looking at the other alternatives, we looked at another, I said we did two, I'm just going to tell you the highest. The, the highest trip generation, we also is part of that record in the sensitivity analysis, we did 324 AM trips and 446. So we looked at what happens along the border, even with that high of numbers, and still the only impact would be, they're, they're, they're similar to what they are with the, what we've shown. Lemister Shirley Road intersection. PMQ trying to get that front to Lemister Shirley Road in the PM.
Like to comment, and looks like Dan's right to comment too.
Okay, well, I think logically, let's hear from MDM. And then we'll go to Mr. Hannigan.
Good evening, this is Dan Dume with MDM, Senior Project Manager. We looked at this project from a, a couple of different perspectives. First, we had them do a sensitivity analysis to see kind of the highest and potential type of warehouse use out there, which is a sortation facility fulfillment. Or the last mile parcel hub, similar to what the, an Amazon would do FedEx type of thing, UPS. So they did that sensitivity analysis, and we had them come up with a percentage increase of the entering volume at the Lemister Shirley Fort Pond Road intersection. So under the normal warehouse use that they're proposing, this is a dry goods warehouse use producing about 70 trips. We, we said that's about a 5% increase to that intersection, which is pretty, pretty standard for like a warehouse. We said, all right, so look at the higher and best use, and they came up with that generator, and it produced approximately 25% increase at that intersection. So what we said was, all right, for phase one, if it's going to be a normal warehouse, do the striping. Do the mitigation at the driveways to a complete streets type of design. In case the, the town later on wants to go to funding for this other intersection through the state or something, you're not putting yourself behind in the process. You're, you're providing a project further down the street that's compatible with complete streets. So what we said is, this intersection at a traffic signal, in our estimations, is, is approximately $1.5 million to a complete streets, mass DOT, shovel ready. Type of project, so you add on the design fee of 15%, and that's kind of where we came up with the number about 300 to 400,000 was kind of the, the number on that higher land use generator. So we said it was a complete set of design plans would pay for that type of improvement. So then the, then the town could go to the state to get funding through Mass Works or other grants. To not only get this project up and going, but then also promote further development through the area and fix an existing problem at the intersection today. So we went back and forth with them, we, we don't know who the tenant is, so the other option we kind of came up with is if they meet a certain threshold, what is that threshold? That would be a significant change in number of trips. So normal, the threshold is about 10% increase in traffic on a monitor, and you would do something additional, and that'd be significant. But for this particular project, going from 70 trips, 10% would only be seven trips. So we kind of went back and forth, and we said, all right, if you double the trips to 140, that's kind of the same impact type level of project. And if you go above that, it becomes the next level project where you would start needing to look towards a traffic signal at that intersection. So again, without knowing a tenant, they didn't want to come back and say, if you go over the 140 or you meet the certain threshold, to come back to get further approval from the board. That's, that's kind of how, how we set up the monitoring program, the thresholds for the design.
Thank you, Mrs. Burtram has a question for you.
Sure.
I understand what you just said, if it's a, if it's a dry good distribution center, it's typically a 5% increase in traffic. But the last mile facility would generate up to 25% increase, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so what would happen with this particular case in the existing volumes at the Lemister Shirley Fort Pond Road? The normal dry goods warehouse would, would generate approximately 5% increase in traffic at that location. And then the higher parcel hub sortation facility would produce an increase at that intersection during the peak hours, approximately 25%, correct?
I have comments, but I'll wait for Mr. Burtram.
Sure.
Okay, so let's hear from Mr. Hannigan next.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting everything through Adam's PC, so I'm having trouble not, trouble hearing Paul a little bit. But I, I think, I think that part of it is that the increase that we're looking at, like, like Dan said, the typical jump would be 10% at our entry. Which would only amount to seven trips, the fact that we're going to basically 100%. You know, that if we hit 100%, we, we have to do something about it, that then the mechanism for the town to be able to move through the process with a Mass Works grant. Is to have a shovel ready project. In, in talking with the DPW, I, I think this, this road is starting to come to more review relative to, or scrutiny relative to the traffic that's on it. And the, the potential for additional traffic in the future relative to the additional land available. A lot of the traffic that comes onto this roadway intersection is actually from Lemister. Would be my guess because of the fact that a lot of this stuff comes down Prospect Street and then jumps on to Fort Pond Road to Route 2. When, when Lemister put in the, the connection out the back through the Target Shopping Plaza, that probably helped quite a bit. But the, the amount of traffic in the area is really regional, more so than just local for this particular area. And I think that's part of the, the whole Mass Works grant processes, it's going to be a regional need. And the idea basically, because this did go through a couple of different iterations prior to being presented to the board. But the idea basically is that if the, if there's an impact to the, to the intersection at Fort Pond and Lemister Shirley Road. That's, that's less than 5%, which would be basically the, the up to 140 number at our site driveway. Then the impact is not so much diminutive, but it's, it's, it's addressed within the scope of what we're, what we're providing for mitigation. You get above that number, and my, my fear is, and I think someone mentioned it, but you, you hit 138, what do you do? You know, but if you get above 140, then the next step really is a, either be able to implement some of the. Design features that were part of the 10% plan set for the intersection. For example, if we're able to add a left turn lane, and i- i- it also depends upon where is the problem? If the problem is heading west on Lemister Shirley Road, and the failure at that point is all the trucks trying to make a left-hand turn onto Fort Pond. And that should be the focus of what we're trying to do to go from 10% to, to, to basically mitigation of, of our, of our issue. If the problem is coming the other direction, coming from Fort Pond Road to Lemister Shirley Road and either taking a right or taking a left. Then, then now we have to start analyzing what we can do. And, and the first part of the, the provisions is to basically state that if we can resolve the issue. That, or the impact that we're creating with the 140 plus, because now we'll know, okay, the, the impact is really taking a left onto Lemister Shirley Road. Or taking a, a right out of Lemister, if we can extend and create a left-hand turn lane, and, and we can do all that work. And we do that work, and we're done, no lights, no plans, no anything. However, the options on the table at that point to say, okay, we might be able to do that work, but we think long term, we're all going to be served better by getting this intersection rebuilt. And getting the plans brought to the, the 100% design level, so that the town can then go to Mass Works. And we'll go through the Mass Works process and actually get the funding to build the intersection the way it really needs to be. So those are the two options that are on the table, and the, the idea, the, the, the real reality of it is that right now, we don't know what, which way it's going to go. But the intent is that if it's a small impact, even though it's 140, if it ends up being, just, you know, if you, if you widen the lane. Heading from, from, coming from Lancaster towards, on Fort Pond Road to, to, to Lumschur. If you widen and create a right turn lane that's 600 feet, okay, then, then that works, and that resolves the issue, then that's what we do. But if it's a bigger issue, then we would beg, we've not, we may not be better off fixing or putting up that money towards that, that remedy. That money may be better spent, put, put towards the plans, which would then would be more of a regional approach of, you, you know, there'll be a bigger traffic study. It would look at the regional need and the regional design for that intersection versus from one particular user. And we think that that's probably a more viable and important aspect of the project, should we get to that level. That's why we're proposing it that way, does that make sense?
Can I ask one question? Make your comments, Dan, I have a question that. Clarify, you made, you said that you figured the infrastructure improvements at the intersection would be 1.5 or so million. And the design plans would be 300 to 400,000, and that was a reasonable contribution. Is that based on cost of those improvements? The percentage cost of those improvements being invested is equivalent to the percentage impact of the development? So you're balancing the, the, the investment in the intersection of 300 to 400,000 with the 25, 22 to 25% impact?
Yeah, so that would set the improvement mitigation cost at approximately the impact to the intersection.
Yes, it's an equivalency.
Yep, as a fair share contribution, there's, for example, there's 100 cars there today, and they add 25 more cars. It would be a 25% of the design cost of that intersection.
Okay, thank you, that's what, that's what I thought I heard you say, I just wanted to.
The 1.5 million, it, it was kind of a ballpark based on other recent projects, just knowing, you have to go to a complete streets design level. And the cost of signal equipment is not coming down, including steel.
Thank you.
I just want to comment that I, I completely understand that Mass Works process, the MPO's process has been intercalal. It is a competitive process. Absolutely have shovel ready projects, scoring method which we used by the MPO. That you go through safety factors that you want, crafting that they minimize, are you shovel ready? They, they look at attendance at MPO, they look at involvement by the town. And when I was on MPO, I actively brought in interviews, because quite frankly, it was a fight to get funding. It's not just a given, because you have a shovel ready project, you're going to get the funding.
No, it's not.
Summer Street was almost taken off the table, and it came down to a vote of like three people that funded that project. For two years, it was to be funded, and at the last minute, Master Yelto came in and wanted to change it to the one I think is section number two. And I had to fight, I had to bring in the H B, I had to fight for the funding, and it came down to I won by three votes. So this is not a given, that we have a shovel ready project and we're going to get the funding. The same thing with Chase Road, Chase, getting funding for Chase Road, the only reason was I had funding, because there was a, there was a project that didn't go forward. Didn't have the town's support, and that's why we were in this situation. So I want people to understand that Mass Works and MPO, and because we've got a shovel ready project, while I'm just saying. Stuck in a situation with a town that's taking very fast.
Can I comment on that?
I, sure.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Paul, that is, I'm sorry to say, Ms. Burtram, I agree with you 100%. One of the differences with this project and the Summer Street project and the Chase Road project. Is that when there is a, a contribution being made by a development in the area, and there's development in the area that has a benefit. There is a, and, and it's still on a guarantee, but it adds, you know, adds points in your favor. So this would be the, the money that.
It does, Mass Works, but not.
So the money, the money that we funded from this for the, for the, for the design would ultimately end up being considered a contribution to the project via the town. Because the town's requiring us to do this. So that plays a role in, in securing the, the funding for a Mass Works or, or grant of, of some, of some nature.
And Lemister Shirley Road would be an ideal candidate for the economic development silo of the Mass Works. Because it's boosting the infrastructure of industry down there, it's in response to industrial development. And, and so, and again, I'm not saying it makes us.
It puts you in a really good position.
And then they say, oh, great, Lunenburg's here, let's give them, you know, a million dollars, but.
That's my point, because it's a highly competitive.
Correct, but at the same time, we can't expect any development that comes in to pay for the sins of all development in that area come past.
Completely agree, however, we just talked about the percentage, that this would be the impact, it would be a 25% effect. That's unknown, because we don't know what this tenant is going to be. What if the impact caused by this development is 40%? Because we don't know, then what? And this doesn't, doesn't contribute an equitable amount. So I would like to see the decision a trigger, that if it exceeds, you know, if the impact was greater than 25%, that we'd be missing the cost, or that we. But, but I'm not okay in saying, I'm not saying, we don't know who the tenant is going to be, we don't know what percentage of impact to a already bad situation is going to be. We're going to guess that it's potentially 25% worst case scenario, we don't know. But that's why we did the sensitivity analysis, to do the highest, the highest warehouse use that we could. Because that's what it was going to be. That we could, because that's what it was gonna be, cleaning with just those numbers. We we know, we know, or what, you know, we just don't support.
So. I have a question that. At first glance, may seem completely unrelated, but. Is there an estimated build cost? Like, what's what's this warehouse gonna be worth when it's done? Right?
We're gonna have a test.
Yeah. It well, what I'm, what I'm getting at is what's the tax value to the town?
Yes.
That's what every developer says, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with that area of town and I work on construction sites all the time and. I would venture to guess that you're multiple millions, tens of.
I was gonna say, you're probably tens at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and investment costs to construct.
So say, when you're done, this is a twenty million dollar building. That's four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax, using rough numbers.
Right, but that uh but that cost of the building, one point five million is nothing. While the town of Lunenburg is included.
I look at it from a different perspective. Now you have a taxpayer in town that's paying three hundred thousand dollars.
I was saying.
You'd pay for that light in five years.
Right, and you live with, and you live with the the hard eye to pay for that. While they're enjoying the revenue associated.
But meanwhile, you can put four hundred residents in Emerald Place that did zero traffic improvements for the town. And put fifty kids through the school system at a cost of six hundred thousand dollars a year. You see what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying. I do see what you're saying.
And I share your concerns because, I mean, that whole area, because of all the development. We've got the intersection at Respor Road, which has never been good. I mean, I don't care if you're putting ten cars an hour through there or a hundred. It's a horrible intersection with the elevation changes and lack of visibility. They're referencing Fort Pond Road because that's the nearest point to get on to Route Two. But as a truck driver, I would argue that if I'm driving a truck, I'm probably gonna go down and take the left and go through Orchard Park. Because it is far easier to merge onto Route Two and one ninety at that ramp because you've got enough running. Um, you know, and so, you know, there's, there's a whole slew of traffic there. And now that we're connected through Orchard Park, you see the truck traffic coming off of to there. Um, so it's, it's certainly an issue, but, you know, I I certainly feel like the applicant has done. A lot to try to mitigate the impacts of their project and I just. Would like to try to keep everything in perspective. Because, you know, there's a lot of talk about economic development and diversifying the tax base and adding uses that don't impact the school system. And don't put a bigger strain on resources. And this is what it looks like. I mean, this is a good use of industrial space. Uh, we don't have a lot of industrial space available and commercial uses that fit our infrastructure.
And I completely agree with that, and I'm in support of this project. My issue is. The cutoff of the business product exceeds a hundred forty trips. And that is, that is my issue, is what happens if that occurs.
Honestly, I don't have enough understanding of this one hundred forty number to even have an issue with it. Is this the twenty-five percent increase from the high bay? Or is this the ten percent increase?
So round numbers, in our traffic letter, if a normal regular warehouse would generate. Again, it was a little bit more of a seventy peak hour trips. When we did five percent of the existing trips at Lammers Shirley Road, Fort Pond Road. It came to be uh a hun- seventy trips more. So not only had our seventy that we had, another seventy, which made it the one forty uh gain compared to. There was some math involved coming up with that hundred and forty trips. It it happens to be double, but it also went to an increase at the Lammers Shirley Road.
Yeah, the the one forty number was set at generally for an intersection um. Impact would intersection to even be studied kind of in a uh traffic study itself, it would be a five percent increased threshold of that intersection. So we said at seventy trips, you're gonna be at five percent and then it'd be a significant increase if you went five percent over that, so that's where the one forty came from.
Okay, but this is compared to your statement that it would be a twenty-five percent increase if it was this high bay last mile.
No, no, so it's the last mile, it would be twenty-five would be the the upper limit of what the impact would at the of that would be at. Lammers at Lammers Shirley Road and Fort Pond. So the one forty is a ten percent increase to the existing conditions at Lammers Shirley Road and Fort Pond. So a twenty-five percent increase would be two eighty, three fifty.
And it's that.
Correct.
The twenty, well, the twenty-two percent came from that four hundred and twenty-eight. Trips per hour that I talked about, not sensitivity and hours in our high end number. So we have looked at the low end and the high end because you don't know the tenant. So based on the information that's available, we're saying that if we use the highest generating warehouse use. We would be at a twenty-two percent increase in traffic around me to twenty-five percent for our number values. Like I said, we're a hundred percent willing to do our fair share contribution. We we send the plans are more valuable to the town than than doing nothing, you know? The plans get you somewhere, so that's that's where that twenty-five percent equates to how many trips? It's on four hundred and forty-six peak hour trips that we think he has.
In addition to what's there now?
That that's.
That's total.
The site here today, so this is from our site, four hundred and forty-six from yours, that's where we came up with that. So that's why, that's exactly why we're saying unlucky, you were the twenty-five percent because we're looking at. Our, we're looking anywhere between those two, four hundred and forty-six trips is is like Dan said, a last mile bet, so. But we don't know what it's going to be, it could be the last mile. And this, and that's what those numbers are, and it's only a twenty-five percent increase in traffic. Okay, only twenty-five percent increase to a which is a four hundred and forty-six trip in key hours, it's a huge impact. And to say that the plans would cover the the associated impact of that doesn't work. It's our fair share.
Like it is, and I don't want this to get inflated with the idea that that we offer just plans, well, we wouldn't write a check. You know, for our fair share, we just, we thought the plan would, as I've said, more valuable, but. Our fair share is twenty-five percent in that scenario, you know, we're we're willing to, you know, fund with the town, our fair share. Uh. So when you. For the the money in Estro, and we can serve to that.
But you just said about checking, is that in you?
No, no.
There was a battle back and forth between the engineers, this is kind of what we thought was the the. Probably should put too often in there, but um, yeah, that's certainly.
There's a couple of questions I have about this, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't understand. Transportation monitoring program, that's what phase one and phase two.
Correct, because if phase one gets counted and we were less than hundred forty, we're done.
So I'm not comfortable with phase one. Starting at three months after occupancy. Uh, and you're saying, suggesting that that should be at least eighty percent of total occupancy, and if it's not, then. Once it does reach eighty percent total occupancy, then it has to be redone.
Yeah.
That's still not, that's still not, but that's, that's. What's your concern? Well, my concern would be then that one forty number should be cut down by the percentage of the occupants in the building. If if you've got one forty and you've got an occupancy of eighty percent in the building, I think you should cut that one forty down by eight.
So we wanted to do one monitoring study at a hundred percent occupancy, but M D M said we should do it at the beginning when it's initial.
I don't care about the idea, I think your suggestion is much better.
We'll do that in a second.
I mean, that's just my one, my one personal opinion, but but I I I looked at that, it took me a little while to find out, I was gonna ask, but I didn't want to interrupt it.
Yeah, so the the concern with um some of that is if if you get a tenant that occupies half the building. Um, and you don't do the the monitoring at the initial occupancy, you can't wait till eighty or a hundred percent. Because you may get a tenant that's gonna be a last mile delivery, but they're only occupying half of your building.
Maybe three phases, I don't, I don't, I just, I just, I'm not comfortable with using these these numbers that are pulled out of these statistical analyses.
It's your concern if they do the study at the eighty percent that they're under the hundred and forty, but the hundred and forty should be adjusted to this percentage of logic.
So it could be this John G local guy, it isn't, yeah, exactly.
As the, as the board, you could trim those numbers down by twenty percent, so instead of one forty, it can be twenty-eight less than that. That's your discretion. You guys can set the thresholds that you wanna see, that you're comfortable with.
Well, I'm also curious about the wording, transportation monitoring program. It says that at the time of initial monitoring, below eighty percent, an additional monitoring program should be conducted. Is that binding?
I mean, you can make it will.
Will.
And then it'll keep you shallow. It should have the replacement for shallow?
Will.
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 I heard the the other concern from the board, you may wanna think about some language that if they, there was a change in tenant down the road, um you'd have to monitor that as well.
I'm expected to have the way we're used to.
Well, I think that was their hope.
That was the whole.
Yeah, and and I have a question for the applicant. Which is typically our process is that we will close a public hearing once heard from everybody. And then we would vote on the project, but do the decision at our next meeting.
Well, you wouldn't know, you you'd close the hearing, I'd prepare a decision. You'd review it and then vote and sign the decision at the next hearing and. On some projects, this being one, we tried to prepare the decision ahead of the vote in anticipation. Uh, so that if, if it wasn't the affirmative, we could move the project along. Um, we can modify the decision here and now. Um, I still don't know if I can print to this printer or not, though.
So, I'm not, yeah, I have a. I think you should take two and two super plan, I think this is my ideal cooperation. My issue is not knowing potential traffic impact and the associated costs. And while I appreciate the argument that this doesn't affect kids' school system, this is great for us not developing, I completely agree with all of that. But I also, if we get to a facility with an increased express, in excess of four hundred trips a peak hours. That is going to be devastating for the people that work in this community. I mean, having traveled that area in high traffic at times. I I am in conscience, I appreciate that they're saying not to complain, and I appreciate them for saying, if we're, if we, if we're within this threshold, we'll do. These mitigation measures, I appreciate that. But my issue is, to me, it doesn't go far. But I know, I guess my statement to that would just be, uh, that and why we did the sensitivity analysis and why it was true. So that will make sure, you know, M D M is looking out for the best of the of the town, which is why they. Came up with the additional stuff for the monitoring study, the the options for the for the medication if we do in fact.
To be a jerk, but I don't think any of the people who work there live in Lunenburg. Um, and and also, this doesn't, this doesn't speak to the Lammers Shirley Reservoir intersection at all, except for the brush.
That's because the impact of the project we're seeing at Lammers Shirley Road. It's no matter which scenario we look at, whether we look at the high case or the low case.
You live on one of the reservoirs. You live on the plateau, you live anywhere in town, and that probably. Well, at least ten percent of it.
I think their point is none of their traffic's turning on the Respor Road.
No. It's 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 on the road, they're trying to kind of. It's the same idea, it's a different initiative.
So so this comment, now working at the at the M D M times, working at the responses. M D M says the applicant should work with the town with respect to improvement initiatives, initiatives into the term of fair share contribution or implementing improvement. And I guess what I would want to see, I would be more comfortable with is incremental fair share. So if the if the if the, you know, fair share is twenty-five percent, then I'm okay with the with the plan. But if the fair, if the if the impact becomes, you know, the the that it's an impacted forty percent or it's impacted. Then I think the fair share goes up with that percentage.
I guess the challenge I have in that scenario is I look at the monopath in that area that's increased and. The additional uses that have been there. I know for a fact that Keating's asphalt plant down in Acushnet got shut down. So literally all their asphalt was rolling out. Okay, so, I don't know, thirty, forty percent increase in trucks, I think since then, the issue's been resolved. But we're not holding them accountable and saying, well, geez, when you opened your doors fifty years ago, you can have all this thrown on and. If we don't, we don't.
This is a new project and before us.
I think what Tanner's argument might be.
You think, this is a, this is a speculative development, I know we've been talking about the back down, it's a lot of risk here for us, so we're trying to, you know. Trying to make sure we have captured what its ceiling is. If we if we impact this thing by different, whatever our fair share, we we will cover that cost, so if it's fifty percent, we'll we'll pay fifty percent of the improvements. If it's twenty percent, we'll pay twenty percent, so it's not what the letter says.
Much more comfortable with that.
I. Well, meanwhile, I I I appreciate your offer, I really do. I just look at it in a more global sense and say, no one else in the neighborhood is doing that. And so for for us to, you know, really heavily scrutinize this thing and put conditions on it going forward.
That, I mean, we didn't look at those fifty years ago, we're looking at this now.
Can I, can I propose a scenario?
Situation, it would be a much easier process.
So I I have one question that I have a a thought. What is the, uh, we need to put a finite timeline on what impacts we're measuring. Because I think to Tanner's point, everything there grows over time. Everything, everywhere grows over time. And what Powell had for traffic ten years ago when they first opened is different than it is now. And even if, a- and so, I I I completely understand what you're saying. And how a last mile delivery site, if that's what it ends up being, no one really knows what that looks like because the. Ubiquity of them is not where it's going to be in the next five years. So we can look at this and say that the four hundred and forty-six is is a ceiling. And, you know, Jeff Bezos rolls into town and his drones are flying out of there next year and we don't know what's happening. So I think there's been a lot of thought and care put into what's in the decision currently from a. Monitoring program perspective. And I guess my thought would be, if we take what's here. And say, any increase up to four, is it four hundred and forty-six trips out of the site or four hundred and twenty-six trips will abide by this. Anything over that number within twelve months of occupancy. Would trigger some additional mitigation conversations. Because I I I think what we have to take into account is both G P I and M D M are doing their. Best using the existing information and industry standard to come up with these numbers. And to not recognize that there isn't a solid answer for this until, you know, things are rolling out of there. We have to, we have to be able to have a hard and fast mitigation program in place. But also, I think to, to the, the point that, you know, they're, they're taking risk and they're willing to pay their fair share, but how to determine what that share is without knowing is, is even more difficult. So I, I mean, that, that's kind of how, you know, I'm hearing what everyone's saying, and that's sort of the, the direction that my mind seems to go is, we, I, I think that there's a lot in here that benefits the town. And I think it comes clearly with the potential for great financial benefit to the applicant, but also a fair amount of risk. And so we need to understand that we, you know, there's the, those, the, the bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. Or is that how it goes? But we, we, we have something. We know what we're getting. And, and everybody's recognizing that there's this unknown that is unlikely. But everybody recognized that there's a potential for additional need above that point.
I don't think this is the year at all.
Uh, the highlighted portion says. Okay, then. And I'll read it from here. Yeah, it's the bold, it's the bold portion on the second.
Okay, so not highlight.
Yeah, Bill, I'm sorry. Hi. "The applicant shall implement additional mitigative actions to offset identified project impact on a proportional impact basis. This may be achieved through a implementation of geometric and traffic control improvements to the intersection that it's the last bolded section under phase two."
Very last.
Last, under. Nope, other side. No, but, oh, see? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you know why?
No.
Because you took your packet home with you last time. And so
This is new.
This is, this came in that day. So Marjorie updated them. Yes. Yeah, but I mean, just ta, just take the one that Matt has, because I, I'm, I don't need it. I have it on the computer. "The applicant shall implement the last bold bullet point under phase two. B, the applicant will advance the ten percent design to final engineering plan that would provide a basis for mitigation by other future developments in the area, state funding requests, or state grant program applications such as MassWorks to address safety and operational needs at this gateway intersection to support and further promote economic growth along the corridor."
Well, I would agree with you that the ten percent is going to be dependent on time, because who knows? I mean, let's face it, things are fast today that they did even a year ago. So I agree with you about putting it time.
Uh, uh, you know, and, and I think, I think a year from occupancy, most businesses are going to be up and fully operational within that year. You know, the first three months, they may just still be getting their feet under the facility, you know, ramping up, hiring, all of that stuff. I think twelve months is a pretty solid time for them to be hitting their stride.
Yeah, so our recommendation on that is you'd probably still do something early so you can identify what their target number is at their current occupancy. And then you can do the monitoring again at the year to verify that they're now up and running and they are doing this certain thing. But that gives you the nine months in between to kind of come up with a plan.
So there's nothing in here about, in the future, have a change tenants?
There isn't.
Well, that would, yeah, would that would, so how do you think of that?
But, you know, I think, I don't know how you handle something when you don't know what the tenant is. So if, if the tenant ends up being, and, and I'm sorry, you guys are gonna get a lot of flack for this. I'm gonna keep using Amazon, because that's the easy one. Well, we use FedEx. We'll, we'll spread the wealth. If it's FedEx and it's a last mile, and that's the first tenant, and in five years, FedEx is like, we're done with Lunenburg, we need a bigger facility. And, you know, Bob's Grain comes in and starts shipping out pallets of grain from here, the traffic's gonna go way down. So we don't know what the initial tenant is and how a change of tenant would impact that.
Can we put that as a condition?
A change of tenant?
Yeah.
I guess you could, yeah. I mean, I, it wouldn't
I, I, for our standpoint, that would
Really difficult.
Just simple traffic counts, what we've already done, like proposing to do?
But I'm not sure that's possible.
Well, but
Coming out of the box, everything we've said we're gonna do, but to say that in ten years, we may have this obligation, you know, like, that's totally manageable.
I mean, that's, that's sort of like the condition, not that this board does it, but I've seen other boards who were like, oh, and if we don't like something, we can modify it. I mean, that, it's, it's just untenable for, for a business owner to have something that isn't defined. And I think, you know, as, what I said before was, if they're over four hundred and forty-six cars, then we bring them back to the table. That's undefined, but I think that there's a quantifiable metric to what triggers that. And they have some control over where they get with that and what happens. So it's not as nebulous.
Yeah, because in a condition like that, if they go over the number of trips, the, the tenant has, has the opportunity to put in different shift patterns. They could use some different patterns or something, so they can, they could mitigate their impact. Yeah.
Well, that's a good point. So could we make that as a condition? That, you know, they have to stay within certain of that.
Again, I, I go back to, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it. Practically, it's infeasible to enforce, because we would then have to be doing random seventy-two hour or seven day traffic studies to see if they're complying with that condition. And doing that wouldn't be at the applicant's expense. It would be at our expense as the enforcing agency.
How about the, um, so, somewhere in between, where you, you're, you're not gonna monitor the, into perpetuity, they like ten years down the road, they're gonna change something. But a normal monitoring program, if this is a mass DOT, would do the first monitoring on initial occupancy, and then you'd monitor for five years on the yearly mark, out to five years. That kind of gets them to a point where businesses could change over that time, but it gives the, the town a nice peace of mind that for at least five years out, you're kind of covered.
And the whole thing, they did recommend, clearly want stuff to be, like, they recommended that at the beginning. The only reason why we said we didn't think that was necessary, because they're gonna have long-term leases, or once they're a hundred percent occupied, what's five years gonna do? It's that, that, that's, I mean.
Well, and, and I guess, you know, maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's a balance point where it's not annually. Maybe it's semi-annually for the first six years after, after full occupancy. And that, I understand you're having long-term leases, but also as we've seen over the past two years, the shipping industry is drastically changing, and they're, they're shifting the way that they do things. So as they, a, as that distribution develops over time, even with a long-term lease, there may need to be some, you know, as Dan said, shift adjustment or, or otherwise to keep within that, that program. I'm just trying to find a, a balance where we're not, we're not dragging you out every year where you're having the same long-term tenants.
So the, the challenge, you know, this one, one, of course, state to have, build a building, reset, and then quantify it in our, 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 here. Go forward every, every year, right? Any, any time, you know, only one, one time you get refinanced, and so it could be, it becomes, again, very difficult to manage for capital.
So setting this aside just for a moment, any other concerns for? I'm just looking time-wise. We're down to about fifteen minutes before Miss. So it's a pivotal point, the traffic mitigation.
The traffic to me is, is I'm hearing what everyone's saying, and what we want to say. But I, to me, we have a problem with the, with the situation. I am not, I am in favor of this project. It's a perfect place for this type of project. I appreciate all of the applicant that's done to deal with the concerns that we've had with them, down sadly, back to the neighbors. And, and I appreciate that, and I should remain to the track.
And I certainly share those concerns. They travel that area of town quite a bit. I think overall, as we look to protect the residents of town, this particular project is fortunately as close as you can get to move to. So we can move, it's one of those projects, you know, so for people that live on Howard Street, the impacts of this are not being felt. It's not like other developments that have been proposed. You know, Walhart or the part of town.
Where everybody's driving through or traveling.
Yeah, exactly. This is certainly one perimeter of town, and I feel like the applicant's done a good job of trying to mitigate the impact. Unfortunately, with a lot of these things is a lot of unknowns. Even if they came to us and they knew exactly who was gonna occupy what spaces, what percentage of the building, and so on, in a few years, that may change. You know, and I, I share the concerns and understand hint behind having conditions on it, but I also appreciate where the applicant's coming from, and it, it makes it difficult to finance a project and get a project off the ground if you feel like you're having skeleton in the closet.
Why don't we, so, on phase two, what if we took off the whole section from the workshops? And just simply said, the applicant shall implement additional mitigative actions to offset identified project impacts on a proportional impact basis to be determined with the plan. I mean, because then it will be proportional based on the effect. And whether we determine we're going to do dramatic changes, whether we determine we're going to require, you know, a portion of the something for traffic, whether, whatever that is, and it will be proportional, they have to share based on their proportional impact of cost. Fair share, right? I'm saying, don't I identify what the fair share is? It may be a plan. Maybe we bring on the plan. Maybe we don't.
Can I propose some additional language in there? That ties their proportional share to the proportional increase in traffic?
Yes.
Okay. But, but I, but I mean, I, I understand that that's what you're saying, but saying the proportional, or the, the mitigation shall be equivalent financial contribution in a, in a, in a, in a form to be determined by the planning board, equivalent to the percentage increase in traffic at the Fort Pond Road, Leamont Street Shirley Road intersection, is that an acceptable form of language?
That would work. I think that's fine. I, I, also, the good thing is you'll have a ten percent plan and report.
Yes.
You'll know exactly what, well before, what the cost is.
Yes. Yes, and that, that's why I wanted to add that.
Intentionally, because we have the ten percent thing. We're trying to come up with things, so you didn't think that we were trying to fall short. We were saying we would do this or we would do that. But I guess if it doesn't need to be identified, that's fine.
Yeah, and I think, I think it should be determined by the planning board and the DPW director, because he's the one who's gonna have to, or he or she at the time is gonna be the one who has to implement and figure out how to fund all of that.
Yeah, and we even say, I think, that, that the report should be provided to the department.
Yeah.
Adam, can I add, can I add one thing to that?
I have an issue with the eighty percent.
Hold on, Bill.
I have an issue. And the statement to complete the monitoring requirement for the project, no more traffic investigation. I have no other additional twenty percent. I would want to be the.
I, I, I don't think that's unreasonable.
So initial, initial three months, and then a hundred percent. Yep.
Yep.
So that was three?
Initial three months and? No. The initial is at three months. And then, and then at a hundred percent.
Yeah, we generally put eighty percent, because sometimes you never get to a technical hundred percent, so just have the town define what you consider a hundred percent.
Okay.
Is it like a year? Like the matter?
Just make it eight percent.
Yeah, I guess. What, once, what, I guess we can talk to you guys about, once we say we've got, we have our, it's full, it's gonna be, we'll, we'll go in. Whatever you want, right? We're, we're going to do it on a percent.
Yeah, I mean, how, how, how about it be a hundred percent as defined by? No, I don't want to do that. That's
Just make it eighty percent. That makes it simple.
He said make it eighty percent. That would make it simple.
What, what are your thoughts on that?
The traffic engineer for the town is recommending eighty percent.
You could, you could define it as a, a hundred percent, as, as something that you can add another tenant.
That's insane. The last twenty percent could be the
The last one.
But
That's not, that's, that's, that amount of station is not likely.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, it's gonna be eligible arrangements last mile at that point.
Matter what they carry.
Yeah.
Who in the town decides the occupancy? You could set it at the, to be determined by the building inspector, whoever's in charge.
Explain to me what order you would recommend.
It'd be something to the effect of eighty, eighty percent or a hundred percent, whatever you want to use, but to be determined in consultation with the building inspector, whoever is in charge of setting the occupancy thresholds.
When these spaces are fit out, we'll fly their building permits specifically to fit out state.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna step out at seven, start my session, and I'll turn it over to my co-chair.
Okay. So Adam, can you read back where we're at right now, just so everyone understands?
Uh, I'm actually gonna steal Tanner's so I can write notes on that.
I don't have. I have ten copies of it.
So Bill, in the, the last bullet point of phase two, second sentence, the entire first half will be struck to be, and it will read, "The applicant shall implement additional mitigative actions to offset project identified on a proportional impact basis." The applicant will oh, proportional impact basis. Yeah, so like
They want to reference the baseline condition on the, the trap, the first traffic letter from GPI. That'll set your baseline.
Proportional impact basis. Impacts. Was so long ago.
It's a few words. Can print? No, I can't.
Uh, I'm gonna be able to. I mean, if we get this done. It can get printed across the street and you guys can come inside tomorrow. Okay.
So the the last bullet that we had before before it's changed with the bold and the base. Said, based on the ten percent design submission, which is we are committed to rights no matter what. For the intersection of Lemister Shirley and Fort Pond, we recommend mitigation measures to be. Add on to that. Off the determining. Because obviously the two measures we have to be in line with whatever.
Which impact basis. As.
Are you here for the hearing?
No, she's here to be on the point of the economic development committee. Uh, as outlined. In. The ten percent. Design. Okay. Design submission works. Uh. So the applicant shall implement additional mitigative actions to offset identified project impact on a proportional impact basis as outlined in the ten percent design submission. Impacts. Or. The form. Of contribution. Will. Be. Determined. Between. The planning board. And DPW director. And. Will. Be. Equivalent. To. The percent. Impact. Of traffic increase. Does that sound about where we were?
Where? Adam, let me just really wrote or at?
Yeah, and for upon it says, the applicant, Joe, yeah, okay. Uh, so the applicant shall im- implement additional mitigative actions to offset identified project impact on a proportional impact basis as outlined in the ten percent design submission. Uh, the form of contribution will be determined between the planning board and DPW director and will be equivalent to the impact of traffic increase at the intersection of Lemister Shirley Road and Fort Pond Road.
And how is the percentage measured? Is it, and I mean, how do you convert that to a dollar value?
Uh.
Based upon gains.
She measured over the baseline conditions as outlined in GPI's trip generation and site letter dated. I don't know the date. Heather, can help me out?
What's the value? In other words, if you're saying it's one and a half million dollars for the lights or whatever it is in in our our share is twenty five percent. That's a big number.
If your impact.
What's the number based?
On their contribution.
Based on of what? I understand that I understand from a traffic perspective, but from a dollar value perspective, they need to know what they're getting themselves into and what they're agreeing to. So if it's if it's a five million dollar project and it's ten percent of that, it's five hundred thousand dollars. You know, because we don't know when this is gonna happen. So if it's ten years down the road. How do we? How do we? I'm not looking for a cap. I'm just looking for clarity on. What the percentage, the percentage in increase in traffic is very easy to figure out. I get that. But but what's the dollar value of the applicant's contribution towards the? Funding of that, those improvements?
It's the same percentage as the inclusion traffic applied to the uh cost estimate to be provided with the ten percent plan.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I'm sorry.
Does that make sense to you?
It seems to make sense to Heather and and everyone else here.
Okay. I'm just looking at a lot of cracked screens except for Dan's face.
Bill's still talking. Dan, so you can you say that again? It would be over the baseline conditions as outlined?
Yeah, and GPI's trip generation and site access le- letter, and I don't know what the date of that was. They had baseline traffic volume conditions AM and PM in there, and then that percentage will be applied to the um cost estimate to be provided with the ten percent um design report and plan.
Okay, I'm 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 lost. I can't follow everything.
The letter July.
July nineteen. July fifteen.
Yeah. So then that percentage over the baseline would be applied. Proportionally times the uh ten percent cost estimate to be provided.
So Adam, when we do the ten percent design.
Yeah, that's what it says. It says that. So I'm gonna read it again. I'm gonna have to spin my.
For. When we do the ten percent design, we're gonna come up with a cost estimate of what that what the improvements will cost. It'd be a percentage of that value.
Correct.
They have an article. The warrant tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm not. I think it was it was a more clear project here, but rather than. Except the easement is sort of hypothetical that might happen.
Well, I think I'm certainly comfortable with us saying that the planning board is in favor of the project and working.
And just to be clear, from this side of the table. We're at a point where we're comfortable with the mitigation that's being proposed. We're just trying to nail down the wording of it.
Yes, and I would be much more comfortable to have the word.
That's, and again, I'm, I want to just be clear that we're not. You know, that we don't come up with this and it's, oh, but wait about what about this? And I understand that there could be language changes and there can be dialing them what that is.
Because there's other questions that still need to be answered for example hours of construction, et cetera. Why don't we go through the rest of it? And then come back and then just give a broad overview of what we're agreeing to and then come back to the wording and then.
Okay, all right. I just want to read this one that we just wrote. So that you can hear it and Bill can hear it in its entirety and I'm not trying to listen to three different people. Uh, so the applicant shall implement additional mitigated mitigative actions to offset identified project impact on a proportional impact basis as outlined in the ten percent design submission. The form of this contribution will be determined between the planning board and DPW director and will be equitable. And will be equivalent to the impact. Of traffic increase at the Lemister Shirley Road Fort Pond Road intersection. Over baseline condition as outlined in GPI's traffic volume and chip trip generation letter dated fifteen July twenty twenty.
I don't know. Say from the traffic. Traffic increase of the intersection caused by off, there's another.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
And and don't if we identify the monitor instead of the. So. And I agree with the concept of the word.
So. Yes, that's fine. I know, I I just want to make sure that we're all on general terms with the basic idea. That's fine. And and you're right, this wording, it's like, it's like walking around with two different sized shoes and different sized.
I'm not comfortable trying to do it like that.
No, I, that's fine.
So an easement is only for the.
No, the easements for the roadway.
For the roadway.
In front of the project to put the left turn lane and the two bicycle lanes. I'm not saying it does or doesn't. I'm saying that's what the easements for.
So I don't, I don't want this question to stay. I never have. Number of instances of things that were permitted or not.
Okay, so. That would have been a great idea.
That was a construct. Stick with that typical seven AM to five. On Monday through Friday and then eight AM to three PM on Saturday.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah.
So seven to five, Monday through Friday. At eight to three on Saturday.
No Sundays or holidays. I think that's the only thing in there that.
Adam, in some some projects in some towns, we've we've been allowed to do work inside the building on hours outside of the um.
Construction hours are site and envelope. Once you get inside.
Okay.
It's just quiet hours.
Correct. All right, thank you.
As long as you're not out there with a, you know, a jackhammer or a rivet at two o'clock in the morning, you should be fine.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the special conditions would be the only thing that are different than our standard conditions here. Uh, now he does, yeah.
I guess I'm confused. Twelve or twenty one.
Oh, that's just, that's just the standard conditions. I mean, redundancy is.
In her.
Yes.
I almost, I I know why.
You wanted those conditions? That's fine. I mean, I'll just retype it into the.
I I.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll retype it and put it in there. Which is what I did.
Well, no, it just says, it says.
The chaplain will conduct. And if you want them in in there as individual conditions, that's fine. Okay.
And I would like mitigation plan, for example. The applicant poses. Poses the. I shall speak, I would like to say, the applicant shall.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah. Once, once it becomes a condition, it's not proposing, it's. Yeah. That's fine.
You know, rather a total suggestive application package. So. I just think it's.
Okay.
What do we decide about eighty percent?
I thought you guys wanted a hundred. They committed to a hundred. Well, you didn't vote, but you know, I. Both you and and Paula said you wanted a hundred, the applicant committed to a hundred. I inferred that we were going to a hundred. It said they suggested to do the.
We'll go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so make it all conditions and change the proposals.
Yeah, that's right. I'll have it to you guys Thursday.
On the item, the additional reported documents.
Okay.
So number three, you have to close traffic sign of grace dated October thirty first. That the name of that plan is actually a traffic science plan and the latest date is October twenty seventh. And then that had some changes that MGM wanted.
It's called what?
Called traffic science plan and it's dated October twenty seventh, two thousand.
And it was October.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
And then obviously number seven, that's gonna go away.
That's gonna go away because it's not, it's no longer a document yet. Great, thank you.
Where is it? So the sound wall.
Yep.
We're going, there's nothing here that says.
Nothing that it says.
That the the sound walls.
The proposed sound barrier at the northwest corner of the property will be a Durasol aluminum noise barrier system or equivalent as depicted in the cut sheet submitted by the applicant.
So at this point.
If you are comfortable and you're just looking for language on this, you can close the public hearing.
We've done more documents submitted or desolate.
I mean, I think closing of the public hearing signifies the planning board coming to an end of the project. I think it probably achieves some of the the goals of going to town meeting with the idea that there is a project. Uh, because the planning board's moving towards a vote and it's really just a final language. Yeah.
I would make more.
Second. End discussion. All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next meeting next Monday.
Yes.
Going at a hundred, right? Wanted to make sure we said it enough times.
All right, so I really.
Yes, that would be wonderful. And I do have one thing that I want to. Ask the board before you scurry off.
So. Well, just. Yeah, just to keep us on track. One on one, pleasant, you don't have anything to do.
No, because he he made the withdrawal, he voted on it. Um, I'll, if there's something I need to record, I'll verify it and get it to the town clerk.
And minutes approval, that can all wait. So at this point, we can either.
But it's just a final.
That's great, final.
Sign of what?
Yeah, and it wasn't, everything is resolved. Yeah.
One of two. Yeah. Thank you.
Have a good night. So we don't have a microphone this evening. So we don't have a microphone this evening and, and you're not on air. So. We, we are loosely connected with Zoom land. But if you could just stick your name in that.
Yeah, Jean Dupree, 727.
And you're looking to be. A member of large economic development. It's likely to be of interest. Business owner?
Um, no, but. Owned by workers. But. You know, it's like, you know, that's Captain Clark. We've done a lot of other stuff together. But have some background. Like that. So, you know.
So what are we talking about? What kind of development? When, what would you see as fast to get enough development?
You know, at, at this point, I think we all have some concerns where especially where things are close to that. Watching. You know. Exposure of. You know, the car dealership. So, you know, what can we do to repurpose on the. The dollars. So trying to attract those kinds of services.
How do you feel about high bay warehouses?
I was wondering what she would recommend eighty or a hundred.
Well, thank you for the time forward. Sure. And you have available, available to. Yes, okay. I would make a motion to.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Welcome. We'll let the town clerk know and you can go and she'll swear at you.
Okay.
Then you'll be a full, you'll be a full member for, for the next meeting. Thank you, Jean. Open space.
Open space. We just wanted to bring this back to one of the. Potentially. Looking at title searches for some of the parcels that are on that show. So I did meet the town council getting an idea of cost that I met the town manager. Talk constantly about fifteen for dollars, about pedal function. Two persons, she's investigating. Regardless of what happens with these parcels, whatever they end up having tax, tax goals or whether they're going to utilize for the whole open space recreation. We still have to get the taxes. So there's three parts of particular that I talked to town. Other about. And that's really our primary focus right now. And definitely some things from the local area. Minutes to the open space hour. Or will be tomorrow on the website. But that caps it all up. And that's really.
The way itself is a duty of some.
It is. It's very tough, tough, tough. We, the town actually many years ago did a check, did a preliminary title search on the Florida Selectment. And it was very, very intensive process and they were still more difficult to get. And it would be much more costly to try to create a title. So there is, and I can send that to you. But the title to, to Lake Shore is not. But there are three parcels in particular I'm going to get them wrong. So I won't. Eight sixty thousand four road. The parcel across from the area of stump hole, which you understand means that was given to town. But not from the legislature's. So that's one of the ones we got researched and a lot of it was a time for. But it was never a form of transfer. So, and that parcel is the kind of influence which some people are. To be clear, open space can be no student of the year and recommendations. But in talking, looking at the parcel, thoughts are. So it's still.
If possible.
If possible. And if not possible, then you have to go to. That would be another whole.
So to piggyback on Paula, the lots on Holman Northfield. Shockingly, not having a survey came back to bite gentlemen who are there. And they ended up needing eight and three quarter acres as opposed to the eight acres plus or minus. So they have resubmitted to clear the last three quarters of an acre. They probably could have just gone ahead and used it, but it wouldn't have been an issue until the town decided to. Because what happens is they don't take the arrears of taxes until the conveyance. So they figure it out based on the survey at conveyance and that's, and unless the selectmen raised an issue, probably would have gone through. These two gentlemen didn't want to have that issue. So they resubmitted for that additional three quarters of an acre. I don't suspect that the board is going to recommend that the select board pursue three quarters of an acre because the front eight acres is already being cleared. But the thing that I wanted to, to bring to the board before Paul left, so that if a vote was needed, you could take it is I was contacted by D E P on Wednesday of last week. What? Yeah. In reference to the water supply protection district. And there was a series of additional changes that they were requesting we made to the actual bylaw, not for the plan, for the bylaw. There are use restrictions that they want language updates to the bylaw for. We, I'm not doing the floor, floor amendments. It would be a disaster at eleven o'clock at night tomorrow after everyone's already thought about everything else. So I talked to the superintendent of the water district. She said, yeah, I forgot about those. So. His, his recommendation was we go ahead with the map change. His being the water superintendent. We go ahead with the map amendment tomorrow night and clean up the language in the spring. Knowing the board as I do, I know you guys don't like to change something and then come back the next meeting and change it a little bit more. So I wanted to ask if you wanted to pass over those two. Articles, the water supply protection district and the zoning map, and then do the entire thing in the spring.
Okay.
So the map is correct.
Okay, the question.
Yep.
The map is correct based on the hydrological study that was done.
Correct.
So that can't change, correct?
What do you mean it can't?
That's not changed.
It's not being changed. They were asking for additional language to like.
No, I know. But, but what I'm asking is depending on what they want for language. I, I want to know what they want for language. And. There's no way for us to change the law.
No, we can't change them. Correct.
Those are determined by the geological.
Correct. We could decide to not adopt the map. And that wouldn't impact the water district. But D E P would probably be less than thrilled.
All right. Well, what kind of language, what kind of use restrictions?
So we have a series of use restrictions and there's been updates to state law that they're looking for us to mirror in our bylaw. I, I, I have to look back at them. I only looked at them briefly and I said, this isn't something that I think I'm comfortable proposing as a floor amendment. It needs, it needs the planning board to vet it more.
Well, my question would be is, I don't think that we can make substantial changes like that.
Well, that, that's, that's fair. Yes. Correct. So we can go ahead and implement the map. That's, that's fine.
Because depending on what those restrictions are. I, I need to know more about what those restrictions are because right now that's pretty significant. And if you're changing the boundaries of the water supply direct. I want to impact those properties that. As I said, we could make the decision not to develop the map, but not advocating for that. But I don't, I'm not comfortable advocating for a map.
Well, the, the map, the map isn't anything. The map just changes the boundaries. It doesn't change what. It doesn't change what they're asking us to do. It just changes the map boundaries and our existing. Our existing bylaw would apply to the boundaries of the map.
What if we change the map and don't change the bylaw?
Then whatever is there is what applies to. Correct.
And D E P can't make you change the map either.
Correct.
But we could drop the map. Our existing bylaw would interface with the map. So whenever zones are there, some two, some three, they weren't huge cheese.
No, it's the goose on the potato. What? No, well, because D E P does the.
Well.
The wellhead stuff. So. They want us to add language that facilities that generate, treat, store, or dispose of hazardous waste. As defined in three ten C M R two twenty one, two A seven is not allowed. Sludge and septic storage needs to be prohibited. Earth removal activities need to be limited within four feet of the groundwater table. They want us to limit impervious surface and water recharge. It's.
We have a lot of that.
We do. This, this is their review of our bylaws saying these things are required to be modified. They want it to be fifteen percent.
No more than fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the zone two.
And we're twenty percent.
Yeah.
Is it what they want or is it what their regulations say?
Right. And if we adopt this map, does it.
It doesn't. No, no. That's what they would like it to be. This is their three ten C M R two twenty one is the wellhead protection regulations. And this is what their regulations say, and this is what our bylaws say.
What's, what the regulations supersede our bylaw? State regulations, if they are more stringent, will always supersede the bylaw. So if we adopt this map, that supersedes our bylaw.
Well, we already have zone two.
I understand that, but is the zone changing?
It is. It's changing where there's already existing homes and where there's swamp and agricultural sites. It goes down Kilburn and up into Dick Violet's backlog. Goose with a goose on a potato.
What harrons it to do this together?
There isn't.
To wait and just do it.
Honestly, the superintendent said you could tell them to pound sand and I've already asked and I've done what I need to do and they're going to give me my permit.
I personally, I would much more comfortable waiting. Explain better and I think I would rather just say we're changing this map. People need to see the impact. If that fifteen percent. Or was supersede our bylaw? And not that that's a change.
I share the concern. I guess my response is percentage wise, if we're altering five percent of the map, I don't see that as. Nothing of a change to say, oh, we gotta table this whole thing. I just, it's spring town meetings talk.
Well, we're going to have to come back with the bylaw.
I was gonna say that my, my.
Or not.
Well, to see to me, that's, to me, that puts ours gross into the dissection because they're now, they're no, not in compliance with state regulations. And I'm not comfortable with that. Because they're trusting us to make sure that we're in compliance. We can be more stringent than this tick, but we can't be less.
Second, you're fortunate. But the. So we're ninety-five percent of the map stays the same.
Yeah.
And if your issue is our compliance with state regs, ninety-five percent of the map isn't going to change. And those residents are just as non-compliant today as they, regardless of what we do with bylaw.
Right.
So I just look at the, you know, what is it, twenty, thirty parcels planned, maybe that like be in that little piece.
If it's, if it's thirty, I'd be shocked. It's, it's probably like twelve.
In that, in about a third of it's underwater.
For most of the year. Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean.
I just don't see why.
Yeah, what about?
Come back into compliance with our.
Heating. Because the heating well is not on our system.
Correct.
How can that be?
It's not on our existing zone. Yes. But it's on, but if you, if you look at the map referenced in the bylaw of two thousand nine, it's on that map.
Okay.
So for whatever reason, it doesn't show up on our zoning map, but it shows up on the map referenced in.
So it exists.
It does.
But. Approving the map at town meeting tomorrow will clarify all that.
It would. I mean, I, I. I think that if the board goes tomorrow and then again in the spring to modify the same bylaw. Yeah. Fair enough. But I, I wanted to, to leave that up to you guys. I didn't want to just go ahead and not mention it and I didn't want to unilaterally decide to pass it over.
Well, if we decide to go forward, I think we'd have to tell people we'll change that to the bylaw.
I think that's reasonable.
I, I don't see any disimpotence to reading. Regardless, we have to come back with the bylaw.
Yeah. And I mean, this is news dust.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not like we knew about this six months ago.
Yeah, it's not like we dropped the ball and, and prepared this. This came out of left field.
Right.
Like I, I felt like an idiot. I'm like, am I stupid? Do I not understand what you're saying to me? And I, I had to read the document three times before it like clicked what they were trying to outline because it's, it's just like a checklist. I'm like, what are you trying to tell me here?
Yeah.
And I finally like got it after reading it a third time. I was, oh.
Yeah.
I, first, I mean, I'm not opposed to want to go forward. I won't put against it, but I think it's just better to. With both. Bring it forth together.
My preference would be to at least get the map done and then deal with the bylaw stuff. Spring town meeting or next fall.
I think we've been made aware of how to compete about deficiencies in our bylaw.
Now, to be fair, this goes back, I'm told, to the Lancaster development and the thoughts of expanding and increasing at that point. And it just was forgotten about. Like back to when there was discussions with Lancaster, that's, this review goes as far back as that.
DEPs were over it when the, the water district was in talks with Lancaster.
So why did we not get that?
Because it didn't come to.
It didn't come to the plan for it? Okay. So how did we get this then? I thought you said you could.
Well, they, they, they reached out to me because I think Fran had told them that we were going forward. And they said, oh, can you just send us what you're doing? And I sent the map, I'm like, look at this, it's perfect. They're like, what about all this stuff? Like, what are you talking about?
I mean, in my mind, it I don't know, we've had such mixed success at town meeting. Whenever we go there, I cringe with any of the stuff, but in my mind, the map is substantially the same as what we have today, so the impact of the residents, it's, it's a handful of parcels on Tilburn Street. And the red part of things, if DEP says, listen, our stuff supersedes yours in these areas, well, then it does that already. Over ninety-five percent of this. Map wise, watershed wise, you know.
It doesn't go across the legislature.
Well, Dana wants to approve the map, I wanna wait.
I think she should.
So I'll just, I'll inform the moderator that we're gonna pass this over.
Well, it exists somewhere, but. Well, hasn't been just, spring town meeting is always so long and I feel like zoning stuff. And, and we're gonna have master plan stuff, hopefully. So this.
I'm telling you what the map says.
I think he looks at that boundary as being one that's for sure, that road, not because there's a road there.
No, but that's where that's, the boundary, the boundary, the, the zone two does not cross the road on the map.
It's probably based on a large amount of rock that's in the ground.
Yeah.
Around meetings and it just stops like this, just so.
We need a motion.
Motion for what?
To adjourn. As she's, as she's putting her coat on.
Hi.
Aye.